Your McMinnville State Farm Agents Lee Holland and Bill Zekman are pleased and proud to be supporting WCS TV, our school system, and our students. This lithoprint of the old train shed in Nashville was a scene from 1945 where servicemen and women were en route to their wartime assignments. Those old values of patriotism, service, and duty, we still embrace even though the train shed is long gone. We here at State Farm Insurance do adapt and adhere to those old values of integrity, service, and responsibility.
Here at State Farm, we're your one-stop shop protecting everything that's important to you.
For your McMinnville State Farm Agents Lee Holland and Bill Zekman, it's both a privilege and an honor to be associated with WCS TV and to support our students, teachers, and our schools.
All right. Regular scheduled meeting in the Warren County Executive Board, this is now section. First of all, we'll proceed. If you keep all noise and movement to the minimum, if you have cell phones, please put them on vibrator or turn them off. Please remain silent for a word of prayer and please adjutant flag.
Okay, tonight, we have Brother David Ray, he's gonna say our prayer, please.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we're so thankful, so thankful for the many blessings of life. Father, we're thankful for this beautiful day that you've given us. We're thankful for this county, the state, the US. Father, we want to come to you now, to be with us as we go throughout this meeting this evening, that we may do what is right and do what we should do and either whether we win or lose, go out loving one another. Father, we're so thankful, Warren County, the people of the county, we're so thankful that we have this opportunity to serve them. Above all, Father, we want to thank you for thy son, Jesus, died on cross the Calvary for the remission of our sins. We ask in this prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Salute you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your liberty, for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Here.
Morris Bond.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Teddy Boyd.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Wayne Copeland.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Richard Grissom.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
David Ray.
Here.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Diane Starkey.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Shane Wiltshire.
Here.
All present.
All present. I would entertain a motion to approve the docket. Motion by Commissioner Teddy Boyd, second by Commissioner Bell. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Then I would entertain a motion to approve them and dispense a reading of them. Motion by Commissioner Randy England, second by Commissioner Tyrone Spartman. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. I don't have anything for public comment. We'll move on into our elected officials and departmental reports. And first is Finance, Ms. Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have a copy of the Finance Department's report. If you have any questions, I'll be trying to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve.
Moved to the docket.
Motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Mr. Glenn Levy, how you doing?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, and ladies of the court, you have a copy of my report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer.
Motion to approve. Motion by Gary Prater, second, second by Commissioner Randy England. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Levy.
Thank you.
Sanitation Department, Mr. Hillis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the county court. You should have a copy of my report. Any question, I'd be glad to.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Tommy Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you.
Steve.
Sheriff's Department, Sheriff, we got Tommy Myers tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the court. You have a copy of our report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyd, second, second by Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Warren County Schools, Superintendent Bobby Cox.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. You have my report. If I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to do so.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Wait just a second. Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second, by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Okay, Michael.
Bobby, I've gotten some calls from some parents here in the last few hours about a robo-call that went out over the weekend. And I'm wondering, who paid for the robo-calls that went out over the weekend asking, you know, asking for the public to come in, or specifically, one, just supporters of the school systems? I'm needing to answer the people, to who paid that?
We have a system that we use every year. There's really no cost to it. There's an annual fee that we use. But the schools probably sent that call out. We didn't send it out from the district. That was a school call. But we use School Messenger, which is our system that we notify if there's a closure for, you know, this Monday, or weather, or any other, there's an annual fee to that. So we have unlimited calling.
So would this have been, would this have been passed through the school board, or through you, or just is it, who has control over sending out robo-calls?
Any of the school principals. Each school has the ability to do it, and the district.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
We'll move on into our committee reports. First on the list, Budget and Finance, Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, you'll have something to report before we start our new business.
Buildings and Grounds, Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building and Grounds has nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Economic and Agricultural Development, Mr. Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and Agriculture Development has nothing to report at this time.
Education, Commissioner Starkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Education has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Financial Management, Ms. Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial Management has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Health and Welfare, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health and Welfare have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Mark Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a lot of paving, a lot of bush hogging going on right now. I would like to call a meeting for next Thursday at 4:00. Carol, could you put that down? Next Thursday, thank you.
Thank you. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and Personnel has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Safety, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Safety has nothing to report.
Thank you. We'll move on into our special committee reports. First on the list is County Corrections Partnership Committee.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, County Corrections Partnership Committee has nothing to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Bond. Redistricting Committee, Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Redistricting Commission have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. We have no old business. We'll move on into our new business. First item is on the tax levy. Now, today, Ms. Hillis, Terry Bell, and I met, and by using the litigation taxes, if they're passed tonight, that's $250,000. We'll have the architect's fee coming back into the budget, which will be $300,000. We have ADA coming back in, which will be $250,000. That's $800,000. We will take those pennies, put them back in debt service, and we can work a bond issue for 12.5 million. And we wouldn't pay nothing for three years until '22. Have one year there that we will, except on the interest only. And this 12.5 bond issue would be 6.5 going to the jail, 6 million going to the schools for building projects. So with that, I'm going to turn item one over to Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to make a motion to approve the tax levy rate of 1.9661, which come from Budget and Finance. I saw move.
I have a motion as a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Chairman, I'd like to put an amendment to that.
Okay.
And I want the clerk to read the amendment for me.
Okay.
A tax rate of 1.9661 is too low to support the needs of Warren County. I recommend that the commission consider raising this rate to 2.25, with 0.05 of the increase to go only to the school system, and the remainder of the increase to go only to debt service. Warren County has many upcoming expenses, including those of the school system and of the jail. The revenue for these costs will have to come from the tax rate. I place my recommendation in the form of a motion.
Did everybody understand that, or do we need to read it a little louder or anything? Did everybody understand, all Commissioners understand it? Sir, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I didn't, on the tax levy, we're not allocating the pennies yet.
No, we're not.
How can you do that? His motion, we just have to read that he wants to raise taxes, correct?
That's it, right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, not specifically on his motion, but I would like to bring...
Only thing we can talk about is on the motion.
Well, what I want to say is that when we amend a motion like this, the public, other than the ones who have been informed this weekend to come, the public is not able to come and speak to us from the public comment time. You know, I just want to point that out. That was something I pointed out a year and a half or so ago when I passed the resolution to have public comment time. When we do this kind of practice, the public doesn't get to speak on it. And that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to raise that concern.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Prater.
Mr. Chairman, that, out of that 0.05, how much of that, what is, what is that amount?
That 5 cents, that'd be about $325,000.
So it wouldn't even be near what we're opposing right now?
Now, that's strictly for the schools. It's 5 cents times 65, that's what a penny brings in.
But we're going to be able to provide $6 million next year for.
Well, it depends on what passes here, Gary. Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Over here. Okay, so if Michael's resolution passes for a 25-cent tax increase and 5% is allocated for the schools, is that 5% for the school a one-time for this upcoming year, or is that a maintenance of effort from there on out?
That would be a maintenance of effort from there on out.
Thank you.
But we can't allocate it till we vote it, right?
That's right. Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
So move.
We're voting on the amendment, so I have a motion and a second, and call for a vote. So call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, would you please clarify that what they're actually voting on? I think we have some questioners who's confused.
Okay, what you're voting on is 5 cents to go strictly to the schools.
Officer, you can't allot it? We can't allot it yet.
Okay, but...
We're just voting on a tax increase.
A tax increase of 25 cents is what we're voting on.
Mr. Chairman, over here.
Yes.
Aren't you, but this is an amendment to the motion, so we would just be adding a tax increase to the existing budget that is on the floor? So we would be getting, or is this a whole new budget?
No, it'd be added to the...
Added to the existing budget.
Yes.
So Terry, so Gary, they would be getting, it would be an additional, it would be an addition to the budget.
Right.
So it would be, it'd still be getting both.
Yes. It'd be 25 cents added to a $1.966, way to be.
Correct. Okay.
Call for the question.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So first, we vote on the budget, then after...
No, no, we're voting on the amendment right now.
Voting on the amendment right now?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To clarify it, too, the way he's got this here, this two and a quarter, this 25 cents, every bit of it would just be going to the fund balance. It's not even to be used in this budget, according to the way the budget is. And to clarify another thing, over the years, I've heard that we've not had a tax increase in 14 years. We have not had a tax increase. I called and checked what my taxes was on the farm that I live on in 2003, and then I looked at my 2016 taxes. My taxes in the last 14 years have went up 54.34%. So whether we've had a tax increase or not, I'm paying over twice as much for my taxes when I pay my taxes. The county is getting more money in every year. We've managed to keep the buildings for the schools, and we have the money to give them 6 million to work on these projects that they're working on now. I just wanted to let you know that over the 14 years, some of us have had tax increases.
Yeah, you know, anytime we have reappraisals, they've always went up. But on this thing, I want to be clear on this. We're voting for the 25 cents, right, to go on the tax levy, which we're making.
It's actually...
Was it 29?
Yeah.
I thought, I didn't understand. Okay, 229 cents, okay. I couldn't hear very well, that's the reason I asked. Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to strike that sentence from his motion saying that that is allocated to the schools, since that was his original motion, was that a percentage of that is allocated to the schools?
Well, if we're just voting strictly for the, to raise it to a dollar, to 29 cents...
We're voting for his amendment.
Yeah, we're voting for his amendment, to raise that.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The first vote coming around, the first vote coming around will be a tax increase. Vote for the schools, right?
Could be, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I mean, after it's allocated, or whatever, we're just voting to, for 29 cents.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If this went to 2.25, we're already at 1.9961. That and 5 cents of this would go only to the schools. This would be more like a 25-cent increase, instead of a 29.
That would still be a 29-cent increase, even though if it, but... Robert, are you here?
He's in the corner.
There he comes.
The current vote is on the amendments, whether to bring the tax levy up to 1.9661 and 2.25.
Right.
There is an intention of what it's the use for, but it'll have to be allocated later, if that's what the money's going to go.
Right.
So, right now, the only vote is, do you want to add the amendment or not?
Right, which is 29 cents.
If it fails, it goes back to the original motion of 1.9661. Where can we amend it again, if the commission chooses to do so?
Linda, she just corrected me, it's 28.39 is what the increase would be. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Thank you, Robert.
One more thing. It just seems a little misleading to put in there that it's going to be, that there's going to be 5 cents going to the school system, when that's not even being decided.
Well, I mean, that's what, that's what Michael said, but I mean, you know, after, if we vote for it, then we allocate it, and y'all can do that, too, so...
Okay.
Call for questions.
Call the roll, please.
Which way are we voting?
Okay, if you're voting yes, then you're voting for the amendment. If you vote no, you're voting against the amendment.
Terry Bell.
No.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
No.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
No.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
No.
Richard Grissom.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
No.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Well, now, this is, this is for raising the taxes.
Yes.
To fund the teachers, right?
No, no. We're just raising taxes right now, 28.3%, Carolyn.
No.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
No.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
No.
Scott Ruble.
No.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
No.
Diane Starkey.
No.
Philip Stout. Blaine Wiltshire.
No.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
No.
Anyone want to change your vote?
11 yes, 13 no.
Motion fails, 13 to 11. So now we're back on the original motion. We have a motion and a second. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? If nobody else wants to speak to the motion, please call the roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
No.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
No.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
No.
Wayne Copeland.
No.
Randy England.
Yes.
Richard Grissom.
No.
Ron Lee.
No.
Excuse me. Gary Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
No.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
No.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
No.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Philip Stout. Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
13 yes, 11 no.
Motion passes 13 to 11. Item two, Commissioner Terry Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is approval of the public schools budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, and I saw move.
I have a motion as a second, second by Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Richard Grissom.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
No.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
I have a conflict, and I vote no.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
No.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
No.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
I may have a conflict, but I vote yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
20 yes, 4 no.
Motion passes 20 to 4. Item three, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is approval of the consolidated county budget for the fiscal year 217 and 218, and I saw move.
I have a motion as a second, second by Commissioner Tyrone Spartman. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to amend the consolidated budget to include the two litigation taxes, if passed tonight, in our revenue side, at the revenue of $125,000 each. I saw move.
I have a motion, second, second by Commissioner Michael Shane Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. How can you guarantee we're going to collect that kind of money? How can you guarantee we're going to collect that kind of money?
Uh, he said if we pass it, we're not, you know, Mr., you know, I hate to ask for figures, but you can have no figures in front of you. How you came up with, you're going to collect $250,000? Well, it's based off what we saw, we, we collected off of $6 or $10? $10. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Now, we're voting on the amendment. Call the roll, please.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
No.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
No.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
No.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Philip Stout? Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 20 yes, four no.
Okay, the amendment passes 20 to four, we're back on the original budget, we have a motion and a second, does anybody want to speak to it? Okay, what Linda's telling me, before we vote on the consolidated budget, we need to vote on the allocations and what these allocations are, is, you know, the schools, general fund, all the things that the pennies go for. So we need to, I need a motion to approve this allocation.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, approve allocation.
Motion by Commissioner Bell, second, by Commissioner Boyd. Does everyone know what we're talking about, the allocations? Okay. I have a motion and a second, anybody want to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Philip Stout? Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 24 yes.
Motion passed 24 to zero. So now we're back to the main motion, as amended with the allocations for the litigation taxes and the allocations. So, anybody want to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
I may have a conflicting answer, I vote no.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
No.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
No.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
I have a conflict, but I, my vote will be yes.
Philip Stout? Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 20 yes, four no.
Motion passes 20 to four. Item four, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution making appropriations to our nonprofit charitable organizations of Warren County, Tennessee, for the current fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2017, and ending July the 30th, 2018, and everybody has a copy and I so move.
I have a motion, second, second by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Philip Stout? Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 24 yes.
Motion passes 24 to zero. Item five, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution we do every year, this is a resolution to authorize the county road superintendent to provide $4,000 in gasoline to the upper Cumberland area rural transit system. Uh, we've been doing this as, for, ever since I've been on the county court and I so move.
I have a motion, second, Commissioner Bonds. Motion by Commissioner Prater, second, but Commissioner Bonds, anybody want to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Philip Stout? Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 24 yes.
Motion passes 24 to zero. Item six will be withdrawn. Item seven, Commissioner Bell.
This is a resolution number 21, 2017, a resolution authorizing warranty to collect a litigation tax pursuant to Tennessee code annotated. We can charge $25 per case, and I so move.
I have a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Carl D. Bolden, anybody want to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Ron Lee?